I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a pleasure to see everyone here this evening as we conclude Women's History Month. Can we have the, I'm sorry, can we have roll call?
President.
Ms. Hargrave.
Present.
Ms. Horton Givens.
Present.
Dr. Howard.
Present.
Mr. O'Kai.
Here.
Ms. Parks.
Here.
Mr. Shapiro.
Ms. Best.
Present. Thank you. Now, we will, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as follows by having the time, date, and place of the meeting posted on the bulletin board in the Administration Building, January 8th, 2025, by sending a copy of the meeting notice to the Star Ledger newspaper and the local source on January 8th, 2025, and by filing a copy with the township of Hillside and Hillside Public Library, January 8th, 2025. We will begin with our presentations. No, we're not. We're gonna do.
You ready?
Well, I mean, your announcements.
Yeah. We're gonna do that in a minute.
Okay, so what do you want to do first?
Superintendent's report.
Okay, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, we can do a lot better than that. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As you can see, we have a full house this evening. A lot that has to do with our children in the room, excited about some of the great things that our students are about to be recognized for and present. First and foremost, to all of the women who represent Hillside Public Schools, whether you are a board member, educator, parent, community member, stakeholder, Happy Women's History Month. We thank you for doing the great things you do to keep us men in charge and in line, I mean, in line, not necessarily in charge. So, we have our first student government, student representative come forth, Mr. Cole.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Olusey Cole, and I am here as Hillside High School's Board of Education Representative to let the voices of the students of Hillside High School be heard. I'm happy to share that the Hillside High School student, the Hillside High School hosted its third pep rally for this school year on Friday, March 21st. With the performance from the drum line, presentation of colors from the JRTC, fun games, and the recognition of the spring sports teams, students had fun, and we are proud to have been able to brought a positive, just brought a positive event back to the students, which improves school culture, climate, and just everybody behaving in general. Students have been asking for a photography club, and it recently came to my attention that they were told to join Yearbook instead. A photography club, while possessing a similar component to Yearbook in that involves photos, would empower students to learn the nuance and artistry of photography, which could lead into the photography club working in conjunction with the Yearbook staff, though not replacing the Yearbook staff. It is my understanding that a teacher from Hillside High School has made themselves available as an advisor to the club as well. What steps need to be taken or information needs to be provided in order to facilitate a photography club becoming a reality? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cole, for your report. Later on, I'll be able to communicate with you about the photography club, but you also may want to talk to Mr. Obina, and he can give you the steps to take, okay? All right, good people, so I want to get into sharing a lot of great things that are happening across our district. I literally just landed probably about an hour ago from a very exciting conference as part of Hillside Public Schools being a part of the League of Innovative Schools, Digital Promise. This was our annual conference where we get a chance to visit school districts across the country who are doing very creative and innovative things, and I was quite excited to be able to partake as well as see what's happening out there in the landscape of education today. I will share with you that my excitement for what we're doing here continues to grow because in some spaces, we're on par with many of our well affluent wealthy districts who have innovative resources, especially in our elementary space. And in a few minutes, you'll see why I'm really confident because of the students that sit in this room this evening. And then there are spaces that make me realize that in my 55 years of being on this earth, you can see how technology is moving in such a light speed. The use of artificial intelligence, which everyone in this room who owns a cellphone is currently using AI, is moving quicker than we ever can imagine. The use of robotics and robots, I had a chance to actually do some work with a robot. I mean, I was standing as close as and engaging with a robot, and I sat there and I said, if we're not careful, we're going to be replaced. Because the lifelike features that were, I was exposed to this weekend and this week, were quite amazing. So, we have the challenge to make sure that our students continue to be prepared to be in this competitive global space that's out there, and if you have not visited the spaces, I'm telling you, you need to, because it's different. How many folks, just by show of hands, have ever watched The Jetsons? So, all of us that raise our hand, there, now, none of us can afford it, but there is a human drone that is flying similar to like The Jetsons. It's $450,000, so I don't, I don't, I'm not in that, you know, in that price range, but that just says that it's happening, right? So, we can't say it can't happen, it's really about us, what's our, how far can our imagination take us and our students so that it can happen? We always ground ourselves in our mission and our vision, and part of our mission and our vision continues to remind us the importance of making sure our students are prepared for the global society that we are preparing them for. Innovation is one of the words that's in our mission statement. New pathways, new possibilities, new pride is part of our strategic planning process. What is your why? This was a question that was asked of us many times this weekend, what is our why? What is our drive? I'm continuing to say that every time I wake up and I think about what's the future for our students, that's what drives me, and I think everyone who's around me knows that I care a lot about what happens for our kids in the years 2025 and beyond, and that's part of the school community, the parents, our stakeholders and partners, all working in concert to make sure that our students are prepared. Our priority goals have not changed, they remain the same, they're what grounded us, you'll see that in a few minutes, and our core values, and tonight, I'm excited because our core values constantly reminds us that we're doing this work because of our students. The students who, when they graduate from here, they possess the following qualities, they are effective communicators, they're resilient, they're skilled, they're leaders. And if you have not been to our schools to see how Leader and Me is working, ask your students when they get, ask your children when they get home. Leader and Me recently just did a walkthrough of our schools, and two of our schools were already in year one on pace to be considered a lighthouse district. A lighthouse district usually takes three to five years to be getting that status, and we have schools already who are just gravitating to it. Our students are already demonstrating those leadership skills. That's the portrait of a Hillside High School graduate that we want. We want them to walk out of here on graduation day, know they're prepared for the society. March is Awareness, Financial Literacy Awareness Month, Autism Awareness Month, and it's also another one, National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocate Month. And now, if our board president, first of all, I'd like to have my principals and school leaders from their respective schools that were recently recognized as our ESTEM winners, please come forward. Take your coat off, brother, you might be a little warm, I know. You not used to that? Madam President, will you join me? Approximately three years ago, one of our supervisors brought a competition that NJIT started, and it was targeting third and fourth grade students in the STEM field, it's called ESTEM. Year one, when we competed, all of our elementary schools competed, if I'm not mistaken, you know, my memory's a little dated sometime, we came in, we placed every school place the first year, every school place. Major accomplishment, first year accomplishment, the first year, Hillside had every school, elementary school placed, proud accomplishment. Last year, we went back again, second year in a row, Hillside placed every school again. What was it last year? That was the third year last year or something? So, we've been placing every year, all right? We've been placing every, that's a round of applause, that is. So, in the spirit of just bragging about how well we did, one of our schools this year, if I'm not mistaken, took first place in every category. Now, well, Superintendent, how many schools were competing, or were they competing against from across the state of New Jersey? How many schools were it?
Thirty.
Thirty. First place.
We didn't place first in every category, but we placed first overall in two categories.
Ah, we took it off.
We did very well on the other one, we did our test, we came into it, and on the law book, we've been fortunate, so here's a word there to you, but first with the other two.
I apologize, I got a little excited. But first overall means that.
I want to be honest with you.
Win the champion, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And those that know me, I love being in first. Second and third is good too, because that means we were there. So, I said, we have to recognize the teachers and the students who continue to put Hillside on the map, and these are third and fourth graders.
Third through fifth.
Third through fifth. So, just think about this, if we continue doing what we're supposed to, imagine what they're going to do once they get to my middle school and our high school, all right? So, we're gonna start with Herden Looker, the proud principal. First of all, call your staff up, because I have a little token of appreciation for them as well.
A huge thank you to Ms.
Appreciation to you too. So, my kids, I made these cookies as their prize, so they wanted it to match their shirt, so that's for you.
Ah, thank you very much.
So, the hard work from our students could not have happened without our amazing teachers, Ms. Catherine Chrisanaz, fifth grade, and Ms. Johanna Williams, fourth grade.
No, stay, you're still, call your babies up, so.
Ready?
Call them up.
All right, so now, we're gonna begin calling our future engineers, Lila Mendoza.
I remember Kenneth when he was this big.
And our boy, Jalen Jenkins. Again, we are so proud of them, they're still celebrating, they're still wearing their medals around their neck every day in school, and even their classmates were so proud of everything, the hard work that they did, the competition, I was very fortunate to actually be there, it was my first time seeing it, and the way the students presented, you would have thought that they have been engineers and scientists and problem solvers since day one. So, we are very, very proud, and they were crying when they won first place, so, talk about pride.
So, let's take a picture, but we also want to give a round of applause to the principal for the leadership as well.
Thank you.
So, on behalf of the Board of Education, this goes to both schools, but on behalf of the Board of Education and myself, in addition to the medals that you received at the competition, your school is also going to receive a nice sized trophy, and you're also going to get additional medals that you can wear to represent your accomplishment. So, that's for both schools, and it's for each one of you, and you will also get a medal as well.
Thank you.
Let's get a picture.
He has something for you to put on your desk. Since this is the very first primary school in the several schools, I would like to put this on your desk.
How did I say no? Thank you, thank you, thank you. Got to make sure all the parents get there. Congratulations. There was some parents that showed up too?
Yes, we have parents here for all of the students.
Thank you to the parents as well, thank you. Well, not to be outdone, of course, this proud principal right here also took his students to the competition. Call up your staff members first.
Okay, come on up, Rachel and Ms. McQueen.
Do you have any words you want to say about your great staff?
Yes, I want to thank you, I got to see, you invited me in the day before the competition, and just to see the preparation and all that's involved, and see the student autonomy and agency in the ESTEM, them knowing their roles, them, the students correcting the teacher, revising the actual script, and, oh, me and my parents and I, we saw a mistake there, and how Ms. Fernandez and Ms. McQueen were just so open to, oh, let's go, let's correct it. So, just to see the hard work and just how much they cared about it is very meaningful, so, and this is what, the third year in a row? We came in fourth?
Well, this is my fourth year.
Yes, yes, so we got, we got a little ways to go, we got to catch Herden Looker, very proud of you.
So, I just want to say, you have to understand when you walk into the classroom, these folks are the type of teachers you want your children in front of, there's a definition. So, the new space at the Ann Taylor.
He's nice.
Someone's gonna wait to get in there and just add all those goodies. But they're not just, it's not just cluttered, it's intentional. Everything that's in the room is about helping the students become better. So, I just want to salute, because you are the OG, both, you know, you're doing this a minute, and I thank you, because you could easily tap out and say you're tired, it's not worth it, but this is why you do it, and I see the fruits of your labor. So, thank you from, on behalf of the board, and that's on behalf of my own as well. Now, we'll call the students up.
Yes. Kaylee Romain, come on up. Yes.
Congratulations.
Faith Romain, I guess it's in the family.
Congratulations.
No. Maya Oliver. Jonathan Lexama. Daniel O'Terry. Kenneth Daco. An amazing thing that a lot of these students also was in Girls Rock Science as well as ESTEM, and we have some in After School Tutorial, so, you know, they are very involved, we like to thank the parents for allowing them to be so involved in school, and because you're so involved, that's why they're standing here today, thank you.
Now, I might make a statement that might get me in trouble, so, but I have to say this, this is why, this is the call to action to our parents and those in the community. I'm going to continue to use the phrase Girls Rock Science. I'm going to continue to use the phrase Girls Rock Science, and if it means we lose a little federal funding because we're going to continue to do it, this is why opportunities and access is important in this country today. Doesn't mean that our young boys can't also have, but our girls need to also have access to spaces that traditionally have not happened in this country. So, I'm going to continue to make sure it's called Girls Rock Science, but I need you to also advocate on behalf for us, because when we start changing names because of what someone wants to put in our head as fear, then it impacts the work that we do of our kids.
I just have to thank Kathy and Johanna for starting Girls Rock Science in Hillside.
As long as I'm still president, we'll continue to do that. So, when we get ready to have our bake off, I don't think we can touch our baker here in the house, she's very good at what she does. I think we all who have been here a while know, she's got a talent that if she ever retires, she could definitely have her own little catering business, a bakery business. Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, no, no. But to, when I'm done, continue to celebrate our students, so in a few minutes, I'm going to bring forth another, another strong component in our district where I will not, as I said, get rid of, at least there's a couple of announcements, it's important, as we move into the month of April, we will be having a special event on April the 5th, please mark your calendars, this is a special invitation because we want to make sure that we give our students and families of children who have autism a space and a day where they can come out and just have a good time. So, more information, information's already been sent out to the families inviting them to this event, we did it last year, tremendous success, we're doing it again, April the 5th, from 11 to 2, at Ola Edwards, excuse me, at Hillside High School. State of Emergency, this is going to come up a couple times this evening, the impact that vaping and marijuana is having on our young people, some people may forget that in the state of New Jersey, yes, marijuana is legal for 21 and older, but it's not for children. That means under 21 is everybody in our district, and it's starting to have some significant effects. So, on Saturday, May 3rd, we're going to have a very deep conversation, we have some more information coming in in a few days that will highlight what we're going to be doing around that forum. We have state officials coming in to talk, and what we're trying to do, this is not just a Hillside Public Schools, this is actually something we're trying to do community-wide. We've reached out to our local legislators, and hopefully our partnership with our local legislators will also make this an event that we call a state of emergency, but we start doing some things within our community. Again, I might get in trouble for what I'm about to say, but there are some local businesses in this town that need to hear our voice as well, because it's come to our attention that they're selling to our students, and last time I checked on the books, that's illegal. So, I won't, I won't put any places out there, but you know where they're at, we're going to have to start putting some signs up or letting our voices be known that you're impacting our babies. Our instructional goals have not changed, they live, the love of reading this weekend, well, for the next three weekends, hopefully the enrollment goes up so I do not have to cancel it, it's called Brothers Bonding with Books and Basketball, it's an opportunity for mentors to read with our students and then get done, have a little mentoring conversation, and then just play some basketball, be engaged. Students in grades five through eight, targeted group for a very particular reason when we look at our data, but it's just another way of making sure we give our students an opportunity to do something constructive on Saturdays, but also continue the love of reading. Brothers Bonding with Books and Basketball, I want to thank Step Up Barber Shop for also supporting, they made a significant donation to make sure there are some refreshments available for the students, and they've also engaged, we're engaging with them about how we can support for young people getting haircuts if they're reading, so, one of our local businesses in the town has said they want to do more and help, and this is one of their first steps in offering assistance. And there are others who've also reached out to us, so we're going to continue to try and do so. Just another note, I said it last month, I'm going to continue to say it, why isn't it important to read for 20 minutes a night? The research says so, but it's also a good way of keeping our kids interactively engaged, also engaging in great conversation, it also increases their vocabulary. Reading 20 minutes a day, five days a week exposes our children to over almost 2 million words. If I had a dollar for every word that our children could read, we would be able to do some things in our community, that's why reading is important. I don't know if you've seen this diagram before, but I'm going to start putting some research out as we begin to talk about why it's so important for us to get a hold on our students vaping. There's been some sad occurrences over the last few weeks in some of our schools, and this is not, the schools are doing the best they can in many spaces, but our kids are creative, our kids hide these things in many unique spaces that we can't always get to. Even when you start sharing with some of our parents, they're surprised. We also have students selling these items. Listen, anything that alters the brain of a child will have an impact on their development, and if you don't believe that it's a state of emergency, you don't think that it is something that we should take seriously, then perhaps we need to bring you to sit in these courses as well. It's an epidemic, and I think every day across this country, we're hearing more and more stories of children and young people getting a hold of bad vapes or whatever else. I don't want Hillside to be on the news for that, but trust me, the kids are experimenting in ways and with chemicals that are damaging their bodies, it's not just marijuana they're smoking, they're smoking things that are chemically induced and can have long-term impact to their life. Without further ado, Dr. Wilson and Vice Principal Tracy Scott Jackson, please come Dr. Wilson and his staff reached out and asked, could they do a little presentation for Women's History Month in honor of the work that the young ladies in My Sister's Keeper have been doing?
Good evening, all. Wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We wanted to showcase and highlight some of our efforts in regards to working with some of our middle school young ladies, as we know, middle school is an interesting time for a lot of our students and families. We want to take the focus and make sure that we are cultivating womanhood and sisterhood within our organization. All of us are here because of so wonderful women to make sure that we were here and successful. So, in celebration of Women's History Month, we have our My Sister's Keeper with a wonderful presentation, I just wanted to tee it up, I have my man, I have to kind of get out the way, just tee it up and kind of get out the way. But this is the brainchild of Ms. Scott Jackson, she brought this to WOK Middle School a few years ago so she can talk about kind of the history of it and what brought it to WOK Middle School, Ms. Scott Jackson.
Thank you, good evening. As he said, my name is Tracy Scott Jackson, I am a proud Hillside alumni, I am the proud president, Vice Principal, wow, principal, future goals, proud Vice Principal of WOK Middle School, but I am also the founder of My Sister's Keeper, and it was born out of necessity, and it was a passion project. I started teaching at WOK in the 90s, and even way back then, long, long ago, there were occasional fights in school, and originally, the fights were mostly boys, but as time passed, there seemed to be increase in the incidents involving girls, and a lot of them were my students, I knew them to be intelligent, articulate, funny, beautiful young women, but they just had a lot of emotions that they just did not know how to manage. So, what I wanted to do was to provide a safe place where they can come and talk without judgment or ridicule, so I invited them, and they came, and they bought friends. So, I invited them and they came. And they bought friends. And it grew. And the seed for My Sisters Keeper developed. So, now, My Sisters Keeper is in the very capable hands of Ms. Chambers. She is our secretary, but she has a wealth of knowledge. She's a motivational speaker and an author and a Realtor, so they are getting a wealth of knowledge just by being in her company. And she is exposing them to a bevy of things. And I'm going to allow her and them to showcase all that they're doing.
My sisters, 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 my sisters keeper, who are we?
Sisters strong, bold and free.
My sisters keepers, what do we do?
Lift each other, push on through.
My sisters keepers, what do we say?
Side by side, hand in hand.
My sisters, yeah, my sisters, yeah. My sisters, yeah, my sisters, yeah. My sisters, yeah. My sisters keepers, who are we?
Sisters strong, bold and free.
My sisters keepers, what do we do?
Lift each other, push on through.
My sisters keepers, how do we stand?
Side by side, hand in hand.
My sisters keepers, who's got my back?
My sisters keepers, that's a fact.
My sisters keepers, what do we say?
We lift, we love, we lead the way.
All right. Hey. Greetings, everyone. My name is Cynthia Chambers and I am the advisor to My Sisters Keepers Club. Greetings to the board, Hillside Board of Education, staff, parents. Whoo, I need a lung. So, we are here with some of our members to let you know what My Sisters Keeper Club is all about and the impact that it's having on us. All righty?
Hello, my name is Kaylee. I'm a member in the My Sisters Keepers Club. And the purpose of My Sisters Keepers Club is simple. We are here to build each other up, grow as leaders, and create a space where every girl feels valued and supported.
Hi, my name is Ariel. Sisterhood is about supporting one another, being there when times get tough and celebrating each other's successes.
Hello, my name is Liz. Our motto is be bold, be brave, be you.
Hello, my name is Cheyenne. We also learn what matters most is how you see yourself.
Hello, my name is Kenesha. At My Sisters Keepers Club, we build confidence through empowering workshops, workshops on self-esteem, body positivity, and public speaking. We also take, we also take on fun challenges that push us a step outside our comfort zones and discover our strengths.
Hi, my name is Naveya. At My Sisters Keepers Club, and we learn how to set goals, manage our time, and make smart decisions. We also set up as leaders and support each other by mentoring our peers.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Dorville. My Sisters Keepers Club is a safe, judgment-free zone where we can truly be ourselves. It's a place to get advice, support, and encouragement from girls who understand and uplift each other.
Hi, my name is Genesis. My personal experience with My Sisters Keeper Club has been fundamental for me and all the other girls here. We have fun activities every Tuesday, and I'd like to see more from Sisters Keepers next year.
My personal experience with My Sisters Keepers Club has been really positive. I've learned to love myself, love others, and just really appreciate the little things in life and just learn how to be like supportive of one another.
Hi, my name is Genesis. March is Women's History and MSK Etiquette Month, where the focus is all about confidence and presenting ourselves.
Hello, my name is Dory. During the month of March, we explored personal hygiene, style, posture, and poise. This week, we're mastering table manners because how we carry our self-manners.
Spread out, let them see the table. Our two teams are going to take their position. Ladies, spread out, spread on that side. Go ahead. So, during the month of March, as they are saying, it's Etiquette Month. So, they're going to do the table setting. Go ahead, set it up. They're going to do the table setting. While they're doing that, I'm going to tell you what this jar is on this table. This is my favorite part of My Sisters Keeper, is our girl jar. And this jar is where they can put any question they have anonymously. And at the end of each session, we pull from the jar and answer the question. So, they get their answers without having to be asked. And let's see. We work from the outside in. And we also learn that if, you know, the right and the left, this wooden knife has five letters in it. The word right has five letters in it, so it goes on the right. Fork has four letters in it. Right or left has four letters in it, so it goes on the left. So, that's one way of remembering. Work from the outside in. Butter knife, butter knife. Water and everything to the right. Ladies,
Hi, my name is Michaela. We'll wrap it all up with a special etiquette luncheon. To put our skills into action, it's not just about looking good, it's about feeling great and showing up with confidence.
Yeah.
My sisters, yeah.
My sisters keepers, who are we?
Sisters strong, bold and free.
My sisters keepers, what do we do?
Lift each other, push on through.
My sisters keepers, how do we stand?
Side by side, hand in hand.
My sisters keepers, who got my back?
My sisters keepers, that's a fact.
My sisters keepers, what do we say?
We lift, we love, we lead the way.
My sisters keepers, what do we say?
We lift, we love, we lead the way.
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 Ms. Scott Jackson, Dr. Wilson, come back up. Give you a chance to close out. Any final words? It's your, your students, your babies.
I am super proud of these young ladies. As we know, as I said earlier, middle school is a very interesting time. So, when we're able to capture them at the middle school level, where they begin to understand themselves a lot better, make positive relationships, formulate constructive and great understandings of what they want to accomplish within their lives, then we've gotten. We can send them on to high school with all the confidence in the world that they're going to be successful Hillside residents. So, thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
My statement is simple. I feel it's always important to work with girls. I don't know how many daughters you have, but I live in a house with a sister, mother, I have daughters. When girls are angry, it shifts the atmosphere. It is very important that we teach our girls and support them as they learn how to manage their emotions. The task that they're learning, they seem kind of antiquated to them, but they matter. And we try to enforce the idea that manners matter. When they feel about, good about themselves, they're more likely to feel good about other people and be less judgmental. And what I want them to know is that we have more in common than we have differences. Prayerfully, it will affect our climate and our atmosphere in a positive way.
We're going for My Brothers Keeper next year.
Good idea. Thank you once again. I'm going to go through some key data points as we talk about how our district is moving. So, hopefully you can see this. Our strategic and priority goals, 1, 4, and 5 are covered by the following areas. Our partnership with Scholastic, in which our students have been receiving books this year, free books, not the ones they have to go and pay for. These are part of the, this is part of the partnership in which we are adding books to the libraries of our students and their homes. Our next book distribution will be taking place on April 17th. I'm going to put a young lady on the spot who has been spearheading this along with two other of our staff members. Ms. Candy Rolls, will you please come forward and share a word of wisdom about our, our partnership with, you're not afraid of the mic, so I'm not even worried about that. But our partnership with Scholastic, but also the importance of Reel and My Books at Home. And I took a chance giving a pastor a mic, but I'm sure you can handle it.
Good evening, everyone. Yes, this has been an initiative that is dear to my heart because I love to read and I love to see children read. And I initiate book reading to all the children. If they don't have books, I give them books. If you come in my office, you'll see nothing but books. We have a book club at Ola Edwards. But this Scholastic Reel has been really wonderful. We have mentors coming in from our community and from our county. And they come to read to the students. And it's not just one school, it's all the elementary schools. It's the ECC, AP Morris, they come and read. And if a mentor does not come, the teacher becomes the mentor, which is a good thing as well. And if the teachers like to switch and swap. So, we have our last Reel Read on April the 17th. We haven't, you know, got all the kinks out of it yet, but we will send notices out so that you can come and participate. And if you're home during the day, parents, come see me so you can volunteer to come out and read, come out and see what it's about. Because I always say this, don't make me love your children more than you do. So, come out and read to your kids, read to their classrooms. Reading takes you wherever you want to go. Did I do okay?
In fact, Ms. Candy undersawed a little bit. The 17th is going to be a celebration event. It's a culminating event. We've done two already, three already this year.
Three.
And this is going to be our fourth one.
And last one for the year.
She said that with a little emphasis in her voice. It's the last one for this year, but it's our culminating event. It's going to be a celebration. This is about not just showing that we are caring about our students' reading and what they read, but it's also about making sure we celebrate readers and the joy and love of reading. So, this event on the 17th will be a big one. In fact, if things hold up, Scholastic may be videotaping us and this may go nationwide. So, Little Hillside is going to be on the map nationally for what it's doing. We have, again, we have, we have already in one year, year one of this, have outperformed many other districts who have been doing this across the country for many years. So, congratulations under the leadership of many people. I tapped Ms. Candy Rolls on the shoulder and said, Tag, you're it. And of course, her and her team. And there's a couple other, Ms., I don't see Ms. Tracy Muldro and Ms. Plantis Simon. That's, that's the team right there that's been grinding and working. So, thank you very much. Budget season, we are here. Dr. E will have a few words and a little bit about that. And we're in a little challenging situation, but we're going to stay positive and upbeat. And I know we're going to be just fine because we have some sharp minds making sure that we continue to stick to our innovation and the growth areas that we want, that we need to. When it comes to operational excellence, we recognize that, again, with the introduction of AI and other efficiency tools, we're going to have to invest in some of our operations to make sure we're more efficient and improve our productivity. Our innovative projects will continue. I was, one of our innovative partners, and I'm going to give this shout out. I was going to tell her a few minutes ago individually. One of our recent partners that we just started working with, Lumi, which is at our WOK Middle School and HIA Middle School, said to me, he was, he's a pretty well-known partner. He's a former athlete who's doing this work now and started this company. He said to me, he says, can I clone Ms. Tracy Scott Jackson? And I, yeah, that's, that's disturbing. And why did he say that? Because Ms. Scott Jackson jumped on this project, this innovative project with the students, and she herself is also participating. She's writing, she's also leading conversations. She's holding others accountable. And this, this gentleman, Mr. Colin Kaepernick, said there needs to be more Scott Jacksons in every district that he's working in because that's what helps the project move. And you can tell that people are really concerned about what's happening when you have a good educator leading the way. So, I'm giving you your flowers publicly. I was going to share with you individually, but two nights ago when I was with several folks and innovators, he stepped up and says, give her a shout out. Great job. Kudos to you. If the board pleases, we'll also begin some work with Apples and Apple Education. That's going to be a nice pathway that involves all of my elementary schools and one of my middle schools. I'm excited about that project because it also speaks about innovation and it's going to continue to do the things that you're doing right now. Priority goal number two, this is lined, and this is something that unfortunately, students and staff and parents, staff may be more pleased with this being in place, but our parents, it's going to be a little time for you to understand. Our governor and our legislators have put forth the mandate where cell phones are banned across all of our schools. Not part, I know there's going to be some cheers and there's going to be some. But we're going to work with our students and our parents to make sure we come up with the healthiest policy. I do not want this to be a policy where we're suspending students right away because of first offense. This is really about teaching them how to use it. But the reality is, we have to follow this mandate put forth by the governor's office and the New Jersey Department of Education. I give the statute and I also give the citation so that you can see that we're not just making this up. And let's see if I can show the link so people can see. Deanna, can you press the link for me? It's not opening. I'll come back. It didn't open. That's fine. All right. The link actually takes you to the New Jersey Department of Education's website and it's, it actually speaks to all the resources. And I'll put this up on the website so you can also see it. But it speaks to all the resources that are available to help parents understand why and how this policy came into to be. It also speaks to the resources that are available to help you have safe conversations with your child about safe uses of cell phones and their appropriate use. A lot of our students understand that social media is constantly being monitored. And a lot of things they think that no one will ever see, they do see, and they have been misusing it. So, just as a word of reference, we will be working on that as well. Priority goal 1 and 4. I spoke about a little while ago, our artificial intelligence policy update. We will have that. It's going through its first read now by the beginning of July 1, our new fiscal year. We will have that in place. Parents, if you have not already filled out your child's Google Education Acceptable Use Form, please make sure. You should find that you're blocked out of continuing to access certain features, Genesis being one of them. And if you don't, then your child will eventually be locked out from using any technology in the district. And you know that quite a bit of our work in our district is technology-based. Cybersecurity report, we just received that. We have several areas that we need to clean up. This goes back to just making sure that our district is safe, but people are constantly attacking our system and trying to infiltrate our system. So, when you talk about security, it means that it's going to change the way our students, our staff, and you interact with our system. So, cybersecurity attacks, there's someone always trying to attack systems because it's a good way to hold districts hostage and get ransom. So far, we've been pretty good. Kudos to Deanna and her team for making sure that thus far, we've been pretty safe. But we still know our vulnerabilities and our spaces that we need to improve. I continue to say this, and I received the report recently. So, for anyone in the room and who may be watching, anyone who is a senior in high school, any part of the state of New Jersey, but definitely in Hillside High School, please make sure that you have completed the financial aid application. Your child cannot graduate without it being completed. That's not a Mr. Glover rule. Don't come to me on June 24 crying the tears that my baby, my grandmother, they flew in from North Carolina. It's unfortunately, it's part of the requirements for graduation in the state of New Jersey. So if you have a family member that's a senior anywhere in the state, but definitely here in Hillside, please make sure that you share with them, they have to complete the form. Priority goals, one, two, and three, continued professional development. I just wanted to show them, won't go through all of them, but these are the spaces where especially our fiscal dollars have been leveraged because we are investing in our teachers. Currently, we have several leader, we have all of our leaders and several teachers going through a four-week intensive course through Columbia University, just helping us understand how to use data and data models much better. We also are continuing our partnership with NTN and training other staff members. I received a nice little kudos from NTN this past week in regards to the work that we're doing here in Hillside. Once again, we're setting the mark compared to other districts across the country that they're working with. Last part, that's important, our metrics are moving in the right direction. Right now, many of the student performance reports that come from the New Jersey Department of Education are in the embargo stage, which means they're just frozen until we get a chance to look at them. However, tomorrow, the embargo is released, and beginning the first week in February, we'll be able to share the data that shows how our students are performing. And I just showed our board president, she's privileged to see this embargo data, and I'm happy to say that once it gets released, Hillside has seen significant gains for the first time in the last, if I'm not mistaken, my data person told me, decade. But you will see how our students are definitely growing and going in the right direction. So that's a kudos to our leaders and our teachers in this district. Some good leadership in there also, I believe. I wanna share with you just an example of how we're doing better. It may seem small, but fractional movement in an area around attendance is very significant. And in the conference I just left, many districts are fighting with chronic absenteeism, and some districts are saying, saying that they have 50% of their students absent from school. And this is one of those spaces, I looked at, I said, "We're actually doing quite better." We put some better systems in place last year, but I just wanna show you a year-to-date where we're at compared to last year. And while there are some students that have transitioned away from Hillside, our attendance is going up and students are coming to school. Well, if they're in school, then our performance outcome should be better, and that's also becoming evident in some of the indicators that we're looking at. But for the, right now, we sit around 94%. State average is around 90, state requirement is 95%. If you see where we're at compared to last year, we are at 93% same time last year at this point. So I wanna definitely say that our systems are better, parents are making sure our students are coming to school. We still have some students who are chronically absent, but we're definitely much better and our systems of support are much stronger. Just to give you an indication, this chart right here is a new form of data we're working with in Columbia University, help us think about this. It's called a run chart, but on the left-hand side of it, you'll see the comparison up through June 2024, and then you can see where the attendance is in comparison to this year. This is AP Morris. This speaks to the students who were chronically absent last year and where they sit now. We still, again, 50% of the students, but as you can see, students who were chronically absent last year, approximately 51% of those students are now in the status of good attendance or frequently, frequently present. Deanna G Taylor Academy, same thing. You can see where there's been an improvement in their overall attendance, and I'm just using some of the schools, I didn't go through all of them, but I wanted you to just highlight. You see that they went from where at this time last year, 15%, to where they're at 10%. That's a significant change. Similarly, they've done a great job in making sure those students who were chronically absent last year, this year, you can see that they are over 60, excuse me, 64% of their students who were chronically absent last year are now in school on a regular basis. And this is the high school. Now, this is the space where students have many reasons to say they're gonna opt out, and you can tell compared to last year, our students are coming to school. Now, when we get there, when we get them there, we have to be doing some engaging things to keep them in school. However, I'm proud to see the attendance rate has definitely changed compared to a year ago. So Hillside doesn't have that same problem that many other districts are having, but I wanna see this get to a point where we have 100% of our students in school all the time. Some final timelines, we're still in that strategic planning process. I think we're making some good traction. Our departments have submitted their drafts, and we're hopefully gonna have our board, have the board review some of our initial recommendations for a strategic plan. May 7th, right, Doc E, will be our board budget meeting?
This is the hearing. Tonight's motion on finance is the tentative budget for submission to the DOE. They get back to us, we still have three or four weeks until we need to revise it, and the final budget does not go forward until after the hearing that evening of May 7th. So this is tentative. Any questions, please bring to me.
Continue to share about our requirements to make sure we're supporting our families and students, especially our students, our Office of Student Support Services. We do have social workers and guidance counselors and other staff members who are here to help our students whose families are going through transition due to the recent federal legislation in regards to immigration. And with that, I would like to say thank you for your attention. I know this is a little longer. I, I got you, I got you. Then it was a little longer, and I'd like to close on a positive note because I know there's always some good energy we should end with. So Principal Davis, please come forward. So she was sitting there looking at me like, "Did this man..." Sometimes you gotta break it up, you wanna end with a, people love to see the children's faces last, not mine.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Ola Edwards Community School is committed to academic growth and student engagement. Throughout the 24-25 school year, we have worked diligently to foster a culture of learning, leadership, and community involvement. This presentation provides a summary of some highlights and accomplishments of our school year thus far. Our school year began with a strong focus on professional development. Staff engaged in training programs such as Orton Gillingham, Open Sayed, and NTN initiatives to enhance instructional practices across grade levels. Additionally, targeted support for new teachers and the use of model lessons helped reinforce instructional consistency. Students have been actively involved in academic enrichment and leadership-building opportunities. Initiatives like the Reel Scholastic Mentorship Program supported literacy development, while Keep a Clear Mind Program and various science and STEM activities, including Computer Science Education Week and Girls Rock Science Club promoted health, wellness, and critical thinking. Students' clubs and school-wide events such as yoga, cup stacking, book club, and Spirit Weeks brought energy and excitement into our school. Theme Weeks supporting respect, school pride, and cultural awareness have strengthened school culture. Our school community celebrated student leadership through Leader and Me assemblies, and sixth grade students have begun assisting with daily morning announcements to support and to mentor their younger peers. Family engagement has remained, remained a priority with support, with strong support of PTA events such as the Book Fair, Holiday Bazaar, seasonal events like Halloween Parade, Winter Concert, and Winter Dances, which has brought joy and community-togetherness, while initiatives such as Thanksgiving Food Drive and Salvation Army Donation Drive emphasize the value of giving back. Academic support has been a consistent thread with ongoing after-school tutoring and preparations for state assessment. Progress monitoring through making period, through marking period assessments, honor roll recognition, and consistent communication through parent-teacher conferences have ensured transparency and shared accountability. Our school has also remained dedicated to student and staff safety, conducting routine fires, school evacuation, and bus evacuation drills. Assemblies on dental awareness and school violence awareness complemented our holistic approach to student well-being. As we enter the spring months, we look forward to continuing the leadership work, including another Leader and Me Assembly and an Autism Awareness Spirit Week, which will include a family coffee and donuts activity and promote fam, promote school-family partnership and celebrate inclusivity. Ola Edwards Community School remains steadfast in our mission to provide a well-rounded, engaging, and academically-rich experience for all students. With the support of our dedicated staff, engaged families, and committed community, community partners, we look forward to finishing the school year strong and building on the success we have achieved thus far. And lastly, I want to bring in the Ola Edwards, well, part of the Ola Edwards chorus, because we have a huge chorus, so we couldn't bring everyone. So I'm gonna bring in some of our chorus members, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Veach, our music teacher.
Thank you for sharing your children with me. If you are able to do so, please rise for our national anthem. Thank you so much. We have one more tune prepared for you, which has become a tradition at Ola Edwards' spring concerts. So we are putting all of our dreams for the future somewhere over the rainbow.
What happened? Congratulations to all of the parents and family members who are here tonight to support Ola Edwards. Just give a round of applause one more time. I always think it's best to close with the faces of our babies, so thank you for that. Thank you for allowing your students to come out tonight and share that positive energy. That's why we do what we do on a regular basis. Once again, hands to our grade principal, Principal Davis. I see her vice principal is in the back there as well. Welcome and thank you also to Principal Guilford, Vice Principal Guilford. And to all of my students, thank you for coming out tonight, parents. I know it's a little later than we normally go, so I'm gonna, before we go to public comment, I just wanna allow our parents, if you must leave at this time, we won't hold it against you, but we need to let the babies go home and read for 20 minutes before eating dinner.
Exactly.
Principal Davis, any final words?
Uh, no. Thank you for all your support. Thank you, board members, for all your support, and my parents and the community, you guys always show up, and I appreciate it. Thank you. As we allow the parents and the students to leave out, again, we thank you all. We enjoyed all of the performances this evening. We'll give it a few more seconds, and then we will continue on with our board meeting so we can take care of our business and move into public. so we can take care of our business and move into public comments. Congratulations to all of our teachers and our students. Okay. May I have a motion to open public comments?
All in favor?
Aye.
Residents are requested to state their names. Thank you, everyone. Residents are requested to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. In the event it appears the public comment portion of the meeting may exceed 15 minutes, the presiding officer may limit each statement made by a participant to three minutes duration. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of the state of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable, for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. The floor is open for public comments.
Hi, Pat. Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. This is for tall people. You feel me. Angela Lawler, 54 Herdens Street. I'm here tonight to present to you a resolution similar to what we had presented, and when I say "we," the Hillside Education Association, had presented last year in regard to the charter school that is attempting to be opened here in Hillside. So, the resolution opposing the establishment of the Hillside Charter School, resolved by the Hillside Board of Education, County of Union, State of New Jersey, that whereas, on or about January 2025, unknown parties began advertising for a Hillside Charter School that is not yet approved by the state of New Jersey. And whereas, opening a charter school could divert resources and students from our existing public schools, potentially leading to a decline in their quality and services. And whereas, the Hillside Public Schools are already excellent, as you see, and whereas, our town prides itself on a strong sense of community and unity, introducing a charter school might create divisions amongst residents, particularly those with vested interests in our public school system. And whereas, we have not seen any compelling evidence or data indicating a pressing need for an additional school in our town. Our public schools, while not perfect, have consistently, I'll repeat, consistently shown commitment to addressing the diverse needs of our students. And whereas, charter schools operate with a degree of autonomy, which raises concerns about transparency, accountability, and adherence to educational standards and regulations. And whereas, the overall evidence regarding their academic performance is mixed, there is no guarantee that a new charter school in Hillside would offer superior educational outcomes compared to existing public schools. And whereas, with the establishment of a charter school, resources would be directed towards strengthening and supporting our public schools. Being resolved that the Hillside Board of Education urges all parties to, all parties to consider the broader implications and potential consequences of introducing a charter school, and stands in opposition to the proposed charter school. So we have presented this last year, and the board so kindly did agree with us and did sign off on the resolution. So I will present the resolution to Board President. And as the leader of the Hillside Education Association, as you see tonight, this is what our children do because of our teachers, because of how our teachers support them. A charter school coming to Hillside at this time, at this fiscal time, is not going to help anyone. We don't have the need for it, as our schools are performing. Normally, a charter school comes into a district when the district is not performing well. We are performing well, and as the superintendent said, we are moving in the upward direction. So I would hope that the board would consider, when you go into executive session, to please consider signing off on that resolution. I do have questions about the agenda, so do you want me to? Can I continue, or you? So with that being said, I do have questions. I know that we're presenting a tentative budget tonight. Why the 2% increase? So I know you're not gonna answer, it's okay. Then we're gonna move on to page four. So on page four, I see that we are purchasing a new system, System 3000, for the accounting and for the personnel system. So the total cost for the licensing fee, which will be annual, is $49,000. The implementation fee is about $56,500. I hope that the system we are investing in is worth all of that money. That's a lot of money. I can tell you, at the high school, we had an issue with licensing, and we weren't able to purchase a license, and the company is holding our data hostage. So when you start switching programs, hopefully, we won't run into problems like that. On page five, motion one. I just needed some clarification. The payment of the $226,000, was that already earmarked for the program, for the, what is it, the interior electrical work and the work in the kitchen at Deanna Taylor in the I'm hearing that this is additional monies. Am I correct in that, or not? Additional to the original project amount?
It's all within the project amount.
Okay, thank you.
You still on page five, right?
I was. Page six. Motion number 10. I would like to know the cost of that program. The attachment did not have the cost, it just had a description. Page eight. We are abolishing two policies. I just wanted to know why we're abolishing them. Policy in regard to remote meetings, and then the other one was gift from, gifts from Page 10, on labor. I see that motion five, sorry. We are hiring a director of technology. That's a lot of money. We only have a very small technology department. We have two technicians and a manager. You know, I'm gonna ask, we need to bring in a director when we don't have enough techni- technicians. We did have one technician leave, and that person was never replaced. So those are just concerns that I have, because again, it goes back to 2% tax increase. In case people don't know, yes, I am a resident as well. Motion 11, and then 15, 16, I'm noticing a lot of things are retroactive. Why, why are we going backwards? Why are we going back to January to pay people? It's March, shouldn't these things have been approved prior? No? Motion 24 and 25. I know that it's labor, and you can't share everything, but I know that our contract and our salary guides are on the website, and I was wondering if I could have a copy of the agreement for number 24. And I think that was it. Oh, and I did have a question about the grant, the SBMH grant. What is the difference between that, which is motion 15 through 21, and motion 26? Because it seems like we're hiring, and it's fine, I'm not saying we don't need mental health professionals, but we're hiring mental health professionals in motion 15 through 21, and then in 26, we're doing an additional grant? Just some clarification. Thank you. I'm sorry? No, 26. 26, I'm, well, I'm looking at the printed-out copy, so if it moved, I apologize, on the numbers.
Barbara Rowan, 950 Westminster Avenue here in Hillside. First of all, first of all, I want to commend the children of the district, the staff, the teachers, and of course, the Board of Education for the advances that the students have made. So thank you for doing that. Today, however, I come before you because your business administrator ignored a request, an Oprah request, and frankly told me that I, he wasn't gonna give me the information. Now that's, first of all, Oprah's not a suggestion, it's actually a law, so I want to know how that happened and why that happened. And it still has not been, I still haven't gotten the information, this is, you know, almost a year later. So this is a major violation. And quite frankly, at this point, given Mr. Eisenholz's interaction with me, I would suggest that the board immediately suspend him without pay, and a full investigation is made of all of the decisions he's made over the last few years. Because this was a bad decision, and as I said, quietly and frankly, you violated the law. I need, I deserved to get that information, and you didn't provide it. And that's sort of the way that is. The reason I asked for the information had to do with the change in, I'm sorry, 2012, after Governor Whitman, Governor, sorry, Governor, Governor Christie allowed you to change the Board of Education election from April to November. In so doing, you eliminated the public's right to vote on the budget. That's a disenfranchisement, which I don't think a board should actually be able to make. I wanted that information because I do think that the board needs to reconsider. You don't have to change the elections back, that's fine, but you need to give us the right to vote on the budget again. You shouldn't have taken that away from us. In terms of the November elections, the other thing is that I think almost everybody on this board has run with a name Democrat on your, on your, on your signs, which again, is not just a violation here, but it's a violation in New Jersey. Board of Education elections must be nonpartisan. But I also wanted to make sure that the public knew that you had been taken away, this has been taken away from you. You had voted on the Board of Education budget every year up until 2012, and this, not this board, but the board removed that right for you to do that, which is just, it's not right. It's not America. We shouldn't, we don't, they can't take our right to vote away from us. I think there were political reasons, but that's my assumption and my recollection, not necessarily what happened. In any case, I would like a response on why the business administrator did not reply, did not comply with that Oprah request. Again, it's law, and it puts the district at risk. So every day that this man sits in that seat, he puts the district at risk. So, any comments, suggestions, contributions?
After public comment, we can respond.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, before the next speaker, I'd like to have a motion to extend the time.
Motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anthony Salters, 528 Chapman Street, and I'm joined today by New Jersey Assemblywoman Cleopatra Tucker, and I wanted to just let everyone know that the addition on Deanna Taylor Academy School, we had a community meeting a few years ago, and we asked her for some money. She said, how much? We said, it's probably gonna cost around $750,000, and her and the late Senator Ronald Rice delivered that money to Hillside for the addition. Thank you. You want to say anything?
Well, it's an honor for me to come to this school board meeting, and it won't be the first, this is my first time. I'm gonna try to make a commitment that I will come to several meetings so I can get a chance to find out what you need and how I can be assistance to you. Sometimes if we don't know what you need or what you ask for, we don't know how to put you in the budget. So if you can give us ideas and things that you need and the estimated cost, when the budget time comes up, we can make, try to make sure you, we get you in the budget. And we can't promise everything, but we do say that we'll do our best to get you something. So I was just here that, I had, he put a request in, and Senator and I worked on it for a while, and finally, we got some results. Sometimes it don't come up right away, but I'm here to say that whatever I can do this, it's the Hillside Board of Education, I'm here for you, to support you. Thank you very much.
My name is Gondaluna Avon. I stay 1487 Hawatha Avenue. I've been living in Hillside for forty-some years now. I have sent so far 15 children through the school system, and still have three more to go through the school system. And excuse my accent, but I was born in South Carolina, so some things I'm not gonna pronounce as clear as you all pronounce them, but I guarantee you, you're gonna understand what I'm going to say. So, in other words, what I would love to say, at the time that I've been living here and sending the kids through the school system, out of all these years, I've never been to a board meeting. Well, I guess I've been too busy to raising the children and getting them together and everything else, but I just didn't have time to get out and come to the board meeting. I'm almost 18 years old, like in a couple years. So you know what? So since the kids is up some age, my youngest one now is three years old, she's artistic, and I started with her when she just only was nine months old to get her in school. I have two, is 40, is twins, they was artistic. I started at nine months old, taking them through school, so they can get their education and not fall through the cracks. I am one. I will not let a child fall through the cracks. But I look around at the system, and I look around at the middle school, at the principal and the, at the assistant principal, how they stood by me. How they held their arms up and wouldn't let me go, and say there's a way gonna be made for these children that they can get a education. Parents, I'm here to tell you today, fight for your children. Fight for your grandchildren. Fight for your grandchildren. Don't let nobody tell you, there's not a way made out of no way that they cannot have a right education to finish school and to go to college, any college that they desire to go to. I've had some once delayed, but they graduated from college. You gotta fight. You gotta stand. So while I'm here to say this, say, give me my flowers while I'm living. The principal at the middle school, he was more than a grandfather, he was more than a father. He was a comfort when I needed a time to be comfort. The assistant principal, when I came in, her arms was around me. In other words, in other words, she was saying, I will not fail you, but I'll help you in every way I can. There was another young man there named Mr. Thurman and he did not let me go, but every time I walked through the door, he had a kind word to say and what he can do to develop these kids. Now, two nights, two years, I've had sleepless nights and they was not great. Tears on the pillow, but I look around now today and I look at those boys, I have nine boys and six girls. And I look around at those boys today, when they didn't want to go to school, yes, we gotta watch our children. It takes more than a mother and a grandmother and a aunt and an uncle to raise these kids. It take a village to run these kids and to get them on the straight streak. I don't have so far in a year, in two years, I have not had a sleepless night because of the teacher working with me and getting it together and letting me know that you're going to get help one way or the other. We're going to find somebody going to reach out and help you. When they start sending teachers in and they begin to have home teachers, when they wouldn't sit in school two minutes, one minute, when they wouldn't even listen to the teacher half a minute and what have you. Now I have one sitting in class every day in school, have not missed a day. They sent a young man in, his name was Mr. Anthony Saltman, and I did not know him from, I don't know, from nothing. And how he came in and how my son was not taken to him very well and, uh, was, wasn't listening to nothing he was saying. But now, ever since he's been there, this young man is coming up to me now and saying, I have homework. I haven't heard that word in two words, two years. I have homework. And I look at him, you know, and I'll smile and says, well, let's get busy with that homework, get your homework. Well, Ma, you don't know what I'm doing anyhow, show don't, but start writing. It doesn't matter. The teacher let me know whether it's right or wrong. I look at him now, well, he stayed on the streets and still out there, but not as much as he used to be. All night, all day, down the streets and what have you. Now, I look around nine o'clock, ten o'clock, that's a blessing, he's in the house. We need teachers like these teachers that we have now. When the child is restless and cannot participate in the classroom like he's supposed to participate in the classroom, reach out and find somebody that can reach that child, let's don't let him fall through the cracks. I went to social workers, I went to diapers, I just went wherever I had to go, no shame in my game. Not time to be shameful. Children needs education. I didn't come like they come. I came in the whole time, didn't have the opportunity like they have, but when I look around and seeing so many of them be snatched from up under us in drugs and smoking and, and nobody cares. Wake up! These are children. I honor y'all. I, 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 I send my blessings out to y'all. What you have done and what you are doing. I might not came up here with certain attestes and what they need and what, and, and, and what was taken and everything else, but I come to tell you, don't stop doing what you're doing. Somebody besides me need help. Somebody is crying and can't sleep at night, they needs help. Reach out! Reach out! Look around! Look around. Reach out.
It's going to be hard to follow that one up, right? My name's Barris Grant. Uh, I'm here tonight in support of Anthony Salters. He's been a pillar in the community. Our relationship with him dates back to the early 2000s, both as a friend and a mentor. He's always been steadfast advocating for students and community growth. As the former head football coach, Mr. Salters has been one of the program's biggest supporters and fans. For eight consecutive years, he dedicated his time, financial resources to helping develop young leaders within the program. As a coach, it's always critical to have support from individuals, not only family members, but people who are invested out of genuine love for the commitment to the success in the students. I believe the district should continue to support Mr. Salters and utilize his leadership both within and beyond the community. His dedication and commitment has made a lasting impact and his work is invaluable. I appreciate your time and will never hesitate to stand by my friend and my mentor, Mr. Salters. In these challenging times, we should treasure good people in our community. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marie Cumberbatch, Hills, uh, Bond Street, Hillside. First and foremost, I guess we are here to rally around Mr. Salters. Thank you. First and foremost, I would like to extend my deepest gratitude to Mr. Salters, my son's dedicated home instructor and Mrs., Miss, if I'm pronouncing that properly, if you're married, Ms. Kimberly Taylor, Director of Student Support Services, for their commitment to the students of this district. Their dedication and professionalism ensure that students receiving home instruction continue to progress academically despite the challenges they may face. The Hillside School District serves a student population of over 3,000 children, a portion of whom require home instruction for various reasons. While the exact number may not be publicly available, the need for this program is evident. It is imperative that home instruction remain a viable and well-supported option for the families of this district. Home instruction is not merely an alternative, but an essential educational service that ensures continuity of learning and prevents academic setbacks. Currently, Mr. Salters supervises six students, including my son. Some may perceive home instruction, especially virtual instruction, as an easy solution. However, it presents unique challenges that require dedication, patience, and individualized teaching approaches. The importance of home instructions cannot be overstated. This program maintains academic progress and prevents learning gap, addresses individualized education program requirements, provides free, appropriate public education, which is FAP, as mandated by law, ensures flexibility and accessibility for students with varying needs, supports students struggling with school anxiety and school refusal, facilitates a structured approach to students transitioning back to school. Home instruction is not a one-size-fits-all solution, but a critical support system for students facing challenges that prevent traditional school attendance. With the one-on-one instruction provided by Mr. Salters, my son has been able to maintain passing grades in most subjects and is working diligently to improve in others. He is three classes away from graduating high school after this school year and the support he receives through home instructions plays a vital role in his academic success. I commend Mrs. Taylor and Mr. Salters for their unwavering commitment to the students who depend on this program. I urge the district administrators to recognize the value of home instruction and ensure that it remains fully funded and accessible. Eliminating or reducing this program will do a disservice to the students and families who rely on this as it bridges to academic success. To Ms. Taylor, thank you for your leadership and dedication. To Mr. Salters, your work does not go unnoticed, hence all your support is here tonight. Keep advocating for these students, ensuring they receive the education they deserve. Our children face many challenges, but we as adults serve as the guiding rails that help them navigate their educational and life's journey. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Arun Amathur, 133 Silver Avenue and Teacher at WOK Middle School. So, um, we decided to reschedule our daddy-daughter dance and it has been rescheduled to May 31st. So I just wanted to make that announcement that we are still having it, it is on Saturday, May 31st, and come on out. Thank you.
Motion to extend public comment?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening. Javon Roberson, I am a teacher here at HIA and I'm here for three reasons. One, I would like to give a huge thanks to Mr. Salters just for bringing me a part of this family here. My last job wasn't the greatest job and it kind of killed my spirit of working with children. I worked at a daycare where nobody took anything serious, the rules and regulations weren't followed, safety precautions wasn't taken, there's a lot of things that had that school shut down and I was, I became real depressed. I met with Mr. Salters and I applied for two-
Yes, yes. I'm like this one. I applied here for three positions, well, for two positions. One was to be a custodian and one was to be a sub. Mr. Salters looked me in my eyes and said, brother, I'm not letting you be a custodian here. I got more in store for you, I know you could do more, I got more in plan for you. And that right there helped me realize I'm worth more than where I currently was at. And that statement from a person who barely knew me made me feel like I was 10 times the man I was. So when I got to this school, I found that great teachers really was here. And that's just great teachers, great staff members was all around and it re, it reinvigorated my feelings and my passion. So now every day that I'm here, I go hard for my scholars because my scholars go hard for me. And with that being said, one of our best and favorite custodians has been moved to a different school. And we don't feel like he's going to do, whoever replaces him isn't going to do the same job as him and we need that man here. Mr. Andre Gekko, I believe is his last name, we need that brother here because that man has helped this school as much as everybody else, but I just wanted to say, I really just appreciate all of you here, the entire Hillside community, and in turn, I just want to give my thanks and gratitude to all y'all. Thank you.
Motion to close public comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Just, I agree with you on that.
Superintendent Glover, um-
Are there any things that you want to respond to as far as public comments?
to the attention. First and foremost, I'll cover as much as I can, the resolution opposing a charter school, of course, we're going to, let me be careful. Of course, we appreciate Hillside Education Association stepping forth to put that public comment out and that resolution as well. System, I'm going to skip the 2% increase just for a second, systems 3,000. As I stated earlier, I teed up about our levels of efficiency and the importance of being more efficient. There are several systems within our organization that are very dated and we have been required to take a look at how we can advance those systems. And so that's why we are looking to make an upgrade so that we can become more efficient and it will ultimately be a cost saver. So the sticker shock of what you see today actually is rooted in saving more money down the line. I think Dr. Eisenholz already mentioned Deanna Taylor, that's all part of the cost, that's nothing additional, nothing new. Just want to make sure I cover all. The Director of Technology, so Hillside Public Schools is one of the only districts that does not have a Director of Technology. And honestly, our technology has changed since the year 2020 and within the four years that I've been here, it has grown significantly. And the, and our cybersecurity audit is another reason why we have to have these systems in place. We are actually understaffed and a director also, and this is no disservice to Deanna because Deanna has done a great job of doing the work that she does, I say that hands down. Yet there's still spaces that we need to have someone who operates in a different space and that's not a slight on Deanna at all, it's just the need to have a director who does more than what is happening right now. And I say kudos to the fact that over the last two years that Deanna has, and her team has done what they've done, but we still have gaps and our cybersecurity audit definitely attests to that. The cost is in line, so I'm going to be honest with the cost, it's actually cheaper because there are many more folks out there, because this is a very specialized, you have to have very specific credentials. We're getting a bargain compared to what folks are asking if they were doing this work on their own. But fair question and definitely one that I appreciate you asking. Page six, you mentioned the page 666. Which one was it? Number 10? Oh. This is, again, something that came out of our audit. Right now, we still deal with too much cash and there's been a request by multiple clubs within our district that asks for us to have a ticketing event where we can, and mostly every other district, when you have an event, you just either scan or pay online. This allows us to do that. There's no cost directly, but it's a cost that goes back either to the consumer as far as how we, so let me give you an example. If we were going to charge $5 for the ticket and this individual wanted to pay online, it would charge a dollar, dollar fifty, depending on the event and how we have it set up. Or we could just put the cost back on to the purchaser of the ticket. So that's how the fees are incurred and there is a small, and forgive me, I do not have the contract in front of me, there is a small fee we have to pay yearly, but it's very nominal. When I say nominal, most of the money comes out of the ticketing sale price. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll make sure you get that. Yeah, I'll make sure I send that to you. On page eight, number two, so a lot of this has to do with Strauss Esme and updates, this is not something we're just sunsetting on our own. The remote public meetings during a declared emergency, that's again, that's under statute, but these are things that came out of Strauss Esme, our policy director. Gifts from vendors, that's a no-no for all of us. So let me give you an example. If a vendor came in tonight and decided to give all of us little bags, we could technically be in trouble. And so we can't do that. So that's why that has to be there. Number 15 and 16, so I think I said this, I know this comes up all the time, it's just a tricky time when the grant, the mental health grant has to get approved. So there are multiple phases and it happens to always kind of end in December. Couple of things happened, Dr. Sandy Mercedes, who was the director of the department, she transitioned, so we had to wait till our new director came in. So that's one reason why we had to wait till Ms. Taylor arrived so she could be mentioned. But it also was that period of when the new grant period began. So that's why that happened in this period. Motion, which is now 27, right, it was moved, no, no problems. Motion 27 still speaks to, we're receiving a lot of grants and there are descriptions that we have to, job description we have to update. All of this, much of this is being paid out of a grant, it's not coming out of our general funds, but we have to have these as part of the grant. The 2% increase. So it's public knowledge, Hillside and Union County was one of two districts that suffered a 3% loss in revenue. 3%. And in full transparency, Dr. E. and myself have reached out to the department, we've done as much negotiating and lobbying as we can. The response that we received from the department didn't make us feel good, didn't help, didn't smile, but we knew, we planned for this and thought this may happen. That 3% decrease in state aid, decrease was approximately $1.1 million, close to $1.2 million. $1.2 million. If I had a graph, I could show you what that really means. So I'm going to give you the basic math. This is just an example. If we receive state funding of $30 million, it was higher, but I'm using this as an example. If we received state funding of $30 million last year, take $1.1 million away from the 30 million, we're going backwards. There are costs though associated, so that's a gap already of 1.1. There are costs associated with, we knew were going to rise. For example, we settled two teachers' contracts, two contracts, teachers' union and also our administrators. But natural costs automatically, salaries go up. That's a gap. You have transportation costs, that goes up. Students who receive special education services and other related services, that goes up. We don't have control over those costs as they go up. So you went backwards knowing that you were gonna have a natural increase in your organization. That's our gap. That's a significant gap. It's close to $4 million in a gap. So, statistically sound over the last seven years, and board members, please correct me if I'm wrong, we've only raised taxes once in seven years. Once in seven years. And the Department of Education has made it very clear, and there's a formula that Hillside has not done its fair share in levying its tax base. Now, we're trying to make sure we support our taxpayers and we should help our community members, and we were able to do good things and not be in the situation we're in. Now we're having to make some adjustments. The 2% increase that's being proposed equates to $620,000. $1.1 million reduction in state aid, 600,000, 620,000, 620,000 doesn't even cover that full amount. I am doing, along with Dr. Eichenholz, my best to never have to cut positions and impact our classrooms. So, in short, the explanation is, this year, we're gonna have, we don't have a choice because if not, then other decisions will have to be made that I don't want to sit up here and have to go to the public and say we're reducing some of those spaces of innovation. Staff members, as you've all come up here and said, we have staff members doing great things. Imagine them not being here, class sizes increasing, and all the other things. We didn't, we're not proposing removing our extracurricular activities. We're not proposing reducing clubs. Those things that keep our students coming to school, we're trying our best to make sure we stay, but it's tight and it's tough. So that's the 2%. I think, I hope I covered every one of the questions. Oh, right, right. That's, that can't happen until after the board takes care. I would love to see all the pouring of, right? Because the state, the state funding formula, multiple districts. We, as a superintendent, we have our meetings on a regular basis. And I know we're not supposed to go into the back and forth, but I just want to make sure I clear this point up. Multiple superintendents have always questioned the funding formula, and this is the first time that Hillside has seen a loss, and it was shocking. So it was us and Union, the two districts, and Union County that saw a 3% loss, uh, reduction. Many others either were flat-funded or saw increase as much as 6%. So this was a little, this was a little gut punch for us, but we're still, when I say the brain power up here is really trying to make sure that we hold steadfast in our work, that's it. But you definitely should write to the legislators and communicate and express the concern that you have because it does impact taxpayers. The Oprah request, I will definitely take into consideration. I think it's a deeper conversation, and we'll take care of that internally. I, I want to also salute and thank you for our Assemblywoman. I know she had to step out and leave, but thank her for coming out and the work that she did to support. That was Deanna Taylor. And I think, Madam President, that is it for now.
I'm back on. Okay. We will now, thank you all for your comments. Um, we will now move into our committee reports. Vice President Horton Givens?
Good evening, everyone. So we'll start with finance, and I'm going to ask Board Member Hargrave.
Good evening. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, March 18th, and we discussed items one through, one through seven on the agenda.
Thank you, Board Member Hargrave. We're gonna move to buildings and grounds. And can we ask Board Member Egwahidi?
Yeah, good evening. The Buildings and Grounds Committee met on Wednesday, March 19th, and discussed, um, the following items, and which were to, which were the revision and approval of the motion approved on February 27th, 2025. And also, um, we discussed the approval of payments to Northeastern Interior Services LLC for the completion of the new electric service walk, coiling kitchen door, and site walk completed to date. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Egwahidi. We're gonna move to education, and we're gonna ask Dr. Howard.
Good evening, Madam Vice President. The Education Committee also met this past week to discuss items one through 15 on the agenda. Primarily discussed were grant fundings, class trips, and to discuss the administrative and custodial calendar moving forward in the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. We're gonna move to policy. We're gonna ask Board Member Estramera.
Good evening. Good evening. We had met on Tuesday, March 18th, and discussed policies one and two, A through O, and including the abolished policies A and B.
Thank you. Now we're gonna move to labor. Board Member Shapiro?
Good evening. The Labor Committee met on Wednesday, March 19th, and discussed agenda and non-agenda items.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Vice President Horton Givens. May I now take a motion to move into executive session?
All in favor?
Aye. Be resolved pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act that the Board of Education meet and close executive session at this time to discuss matters relating to personnel, pending litigation, labor negotiations, and contract negotiations. The Board will reconvene in public session at the conclusion of the closed session. The matters discussed in closed session will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Thank you.
Officer, put it in my little desk drawer.
Hello. As Vice President says, can you hear me now? May I have a motion to?
Motion.
Oh, come out of executive session? Okay.
That's second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you all for waiting so patiently. We appreciate you. Okay. Member Shapiro, will you please move finance?
Yes, Madam President. I'd like to move items one through seven under finance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Egwahidi?
Yes.
Mr. Estramera?
Yes.
Ms. Hargrave?
Yes.
Ms. Horton Givens?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Okai?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes, and abstaining from three, I'm gonna give you the two bill numbers, T-790 and 7170.
One more time.
T-790 and 7170. And I'm voting abstain on number six.
Ms. Best?
Yes.
Thank you all. Um, and one note, please. I provided the audit and the management report. Please review that for the next meeting when we'll bless both.
Okay, thank you. Member Egwahidi, will you please take Buildings and Grounds, move Buildings and Grounds?
Yeah, I move, um, items one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Egwahidi?
Yes.
Ms. Estramera?
Yes.
Ms. Hargrave?
Yes.
Horton Givens?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Okai?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
Ms. Best?
Yes.
Member, well, Vice President Horton Givens, will you please move education?
Yes, I'd like to move items one through 15 on education.
Ms. Egwahidi?
Yes.
Mr. Estramera?
Yes.
Ms. Hargrave?
Yes.
Ms. Horton Givens?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Okai?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes, abstain 12A.
Sorry?
Abstain on 12A.
Got it. Ms. Best?
Yes.
Madam President, before you ask for a motion on policy, I just have a question on it.
Oh.
That's okay, on the, on policy? The, can somebody just address the removal of the two policies listed under motion two and just explain to the board what that is?
Strauss Esme determines if it's been something that has become dated out, which I think one of those may be, or replaced. And they make those determinations based on any changes in the law. These are always a reflection on the law.
So 7231 would have been replaced somewhere else?
Could be. If not, it aged out. It didn't determine one, but if you want to see the background on it, I could provide that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, sorry.
No problem. Member Parks, will you please move policy, first readings?
I would like to move, uh, policy readings one through two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, fight for me.
Ms. Egwahidi?
Yes.
Mr. Estramera?
Yes.
Ms. Hargrave?
Yes.
Ms. Horton Givens?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Okai?
Yes.
Ms. Parks? Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
Ms. Best?
Yes. Dr. Howard, will you please move labor relations?
I'd like to move items one through 27 on labor agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Egwahidi?
Yes.
Mr. Estramera?
Yes.
Ms. Hargrave?
Yes.
Ms. Horton Givens?
Yes.
Dr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Okai?
Yes.
Ms. Parks?
Yes.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes, abstain from five, 24, 25, and 26.
Five, 24, 25, 26?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Best?
Yes.
I'm just giving this to me. Oh, okay. Yes. So just want to state the resolution that was presented. Uh, we will have it reviewed further by our Board Attorney, and we will actually take action on it in the April meeting. Okay, um, any old or new business?
Happy birthday to Board Member Parks.
Happy birthday. And a happy-
Happy birthday.
And a happy birthday to Dr. Mathura.
Happy birthday. Okay, um, it's been a long evening, so I want to thank you all for coming out and supporting us as always. Uh, we end Women's History Month. Um, there were a few people that are in this room right now that have been acknowledged, and I do want to give them a shout out as they are here. Our Vice President Horton Givens received acknowledgement at Ola Edwards for Women's History Month. We also have Ms. Candy Rouse as well. And we have Ms. Beverly Harris. Thank you, ladies, for all that you do. And with that, I will take a mo- Motion to adjourn. All right.
There a second or in favor?
Aye. Have a good night getting home, safe, everyone.